Thank you. Great, so we're going to convene the Tuesday, April 28th, School Committee meeting. I'm going to start with roll calling attendance, Joseph Jowdy.
No, you're on mute.
I think I'm off of mute. Jaffa? No? All right. Okay. There, I'll do this.
Yep.
Charlie Conneill?
Yep.
Maya Parkin?
Here.
Anthony Maughlin here. Good, so a few things. So I just want to recognize that we are on live stream, providing real-time public access to the access, the activities of the school committee in accordance with the March 18th Executive Order of the Governor. Additional, Westwood Media is broadcasting this for later broadcasts as well. Two things before I hand it over to Emily. As people who are on the live stream, there is a link for public comment, where you can fill out the Google form. And we will, when we get to the public participation later in the meeting, we will read that form. I'd encourage you, if you have any public participation, to do it now, because we'll be, public participation will be in 15 minutes about. Do that now. The other thing, I'm going to, we're going to switch up slightly the agenda. We are going to swap, because there was a lot of interest in the public in the student's travel. The next year, we swap that with the transportation contract. So right after public participation, talk about the student travel. Okay? Great, let me hand it over to the superintendent.
Tony, I think Joseph is off mute, if you want to do her welcome.
Joseph? Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks. All right, well, hello, everyone. So for the superintendence report tonight, I want to update you on some of the things that we've been working on, and specifically, some of the continuing impacts of the closure. As you know, the governor announced that the school closure and the remote learning model will remain in place for the remainder of the school year. I think that that wasn't entirely unexpected, but still a bit of a blow nonetheless to hear that news. When the closure was extended, the Commissioner of Education said that the Department of Education would be releasing updated guidance related to this, what I will call Phase Three now of this experience. We did just receive that guidance, and this is clearly lengthy document. We are taking our time to go through it. But I will say that a sort of a quick read indicates to me that Westwood had already sort of ramped up beyond what was expected in the last set of guidance. And so I think we're already largely meeting the new expectations. But, you know, we are still going through that document. And in addition, I think with the knowledge that this remote learning model is going to continue for some time, we're, we are taking that opportunity to assess what we think is working in our model and what's not, and think about if we want to make any changes. So there are a couple of things that are notable. So the, the department has provided what they call power standards. So they've taken a look at all the curriculum frameworks, and they've picked out for each grade or discipline, some of the standards that they're saying, these definitely have to be covered, you know, even if it means now remotely, instructionally. And so we are taking a look at those standards to make sure that our instruction is aligned with them. And I think it's safe to say that a lot of them are things that we, you know, we've been working on all year long, but will continue to focus in those areas. The other interesting thing that I noticed is that their guidance asks districts to prioritize asynchronous instruction. And that kind of caught my eye, and we are giving that considerable thought, because I, I think that our initial inclination was that we might want to, if anything, increase the synchronous instruction, meaning when teachers are kind of on live with kids. And the guidance is the opposite of that, which is interesting. I think that they're trying to ensure flexibility for students. But we're, we're thinking a little bit in the other direction right now. And so, for example, we may be, we may be making some changes at, at the middle school, where we expect kids to attend these blocks of time that teachers are online. And, you know, they wouldn't be optional. So I think we'll be hearing more about that from the middle school soon. We are also starting to think hard about how we're going to gather information about where each student is and their learning at the end of the year, because that'll be important in terms of planning for the fall and trying to sort of get a handle on, on that. I can report that in Westwood, student attendance has been very strong. So that is wonderful. And, you know, I commend our students. We're really kind of sticking with it and showing up for the instruction. And of course, also give my kudos to parents, who I know are, I'm sure, part of that process as well, and having to play a challenging role this time. Student Services, the Student Services Department sent a letter to parents last Friday with special education updates, and I forwarded that to you to take a look at. We are currently working on what Desi calls "remote learning plans" for each student with an IEP. We were awaiting some information from the federal government related to special education, but it looks like, I believe Betsy DeVos has made an announcement today, the announcement being that the federal government will not be providing any sort of waivers whatsoever regarding special education. So that is a challenging circumstance, and we'll be thinking about that. And I do especially just want to give a sort of a shout out and a thank you to our special education staff, because they are really working very, very hard right now in a, in a tough environment. And I think they're really doing what they think is in the best interest of kids, and I appreciate that. We have been reaching out to parents. So we partnered with Westwood Youth and Family Services. They did a program for parents today, that actually, they had to close registration at 100. They had reached their Zoom meeting limit. So clearly, there's a lot of interest in that. It was about parenting in uncertain times. And we continue to collaborate with the CPAC, who have been wonderful. And I know principals have started to have virtual coffees, so that they can also hear from parents and answer questions. So there's a lot going on on the teaching and learning front. Let me just pause there and see if there are any questions about any of that.
What seems to be the most prevalent comment you're getting from parents in terms of how they are viewing virtual learning?
I mean, if I were honest, Joseph, I would say that the comments are all over the map. So we field comments from people who say, "It's not enough work." You know, "My kid dashes through it, is done by Tuesday," you know, whatever, "and it needs to be more rigorous." And then we also get comments from people who say, "This is totally overwhelming," or "having trouble keeping track of it all." It was, it's, it's hard to know. I think people are really experiencing it differently. You know, clearly, there are challenges for parents of younger kids, because they really have to provide a great deal of support in terms of accessing learning. And so we hear that, we hear how hard that is. I really acknowledge it. And on the flip side, we're hearing from parents how much they appreciate what elementary teachers are doing to stay connected to kids. So I think it's safe to say that everybody is feeling a little frayed in our houses at this point.
Are you doing any kind of, I don't want to say leveling, but are they, for each grade, is the amount, the work that they're providing, is it the whole group, or are they breaking it into groups?
Yeah, I see Alison Waveman, she's probably best equipped to talk about that.
I can talk a little bit about the elementary. Can you hear me okay? I've got, that's weird. Okay. I think one of the things the elementary teachers are doing, a nice job doing is, is trying to get to smaller groups. So instead of meeting synchronously with the whole class all the time, they're doing sort of small group sessions with kids, which really works well for some kids in particular. And it's those breakout sessions that allow them to kind of group the kids and look at where they are and try and meet their needs. And I, I think some of that is also going on at the secondary level, more of that actually than, than the bigger group work, from what I understand. So that's really kind of the, the main mechanism that we're using right now. And, and also, all the sort of student services side. I'd say Abby and the team at the Student Services have provided a lot.
And then secondary is?
What do they do? Yeah, secondary, sort of, some of the same thing. There's some kind of small group work at the high school, but also at the middle school and follow-up from the main class instruction. But also, I think, at that level, where we've got a couple of different structures in place. So the class structures at the secondary sort of parallel what they are in real life, which means there's sort of leveled math built in and leveled courses at the high school built in. If that makes sense. Okay.
I have a quick question. And I know when we first started to do this, so many kids would set short notice that we had some problems. And I'm just wondering, how have we, have we been able to resolve most of those issues of technology and getting it to kids? And the other part of it relates to the Medco kids. Are they all, you know, available to plug into all of this technology and take advantage of it? Or is it, is it still a problem out there that we need to resolve?
No, I think we're feeling good about where we are with technology. I mean, all of our kids, six to 12, already had a Chromebook. And we distributed in three to five. And for K to two, we've, a limited, more limited number, probably a 40 or 50, I'm going to say, Chromebooks, we've distributed to people who've indicated that they needed support with the device. We've distributed hotspots. So I think we've worked out the technology issues, you know, to the extent that we can. We, we don't have enough devices to give every student in grades K to two a Chromebook. So we had to, you know, ask for input from parents about their needs. I think we're, we're in good shape with that. And I would also say that Allison has been great, taking the lead. And so we have, for people, there's a small number of people who have indicated that they needed help. They don't have a printer at home for K to two, this is, we're talking about, where a lot of the instruction doesn't take place online. And so we have a system now where we distribute packets.
The Medco kids seem to be having no problems.
No, they are participating. Yep.
Thank you. Other comments, I think it's, yeah, I think it's great. I know the state will give guidance on some of these things, but to the extent that, you know, we're Westwood, I think it's, the state isn't always maybe aligned with what makes sense for the kids. I just encourage, I think that's great. So you have my support on that.
Yeah, no, of course. I think that we, you know, from the very beginning, we, we thought we would do what we thought was in the best instructionally, for sure. Yeah. So, and, and actually, I'm, I, I'm going to be on a call tomorrow with probably about, I don't know, 2025 superintendents in the area. And we're going to be taking a look at the guidance together and sort of talking with each other about what's happening in various districts. So, you know, we, we can learn from each other. Okay, so that's that. You know, I just want to say a few words about the level of disruption for kids that this presents. I think it was, you know, really hard to know that we aren't returning to school. And I think that a lot of kids were holding on to hope about a lot of things. So, you know, will there be a, a spring sports season, right? And, and it was, well, can we have a shortened spring sports season? And just, you know, one more disappointment to know that that isn't going to happen at this point, particularly for seniors, that's been really hard. And, you know, I will say, I think that we're all just experiencing loss at this point, that, you know, what about spring concerts? What about the field trips? All of those things that are so important in schools, that we know are, you know, special to kids, special to the community. And we're all really feeling the impact of that. I think it's particularly sad for kids who are at milestone grades. So, you know, sort of the fifth graders, the eighth graders, clearly the seniors. Just because there's so many rites of passage that are associated with those transitions. And, you know, the principals are very aware of that. I'm confident that we're going to come up with wonderful celebratory fun things that we can do, that perhaps sort of embrace the strangeness of the moment and kind of think out of the box a little bit. One of the things that we were thinking a lot about is graduation. And, you know, Tony and I had a conversation with you on Friday, and I had updated other members of the committee that the high school administration had made a decision to go forward with graduation on June 7th as scheduled. And, you know, to do something virtual and also to form a task force to say, "And what else could we do? Could we do a car parade, or I don't know what, drive-through diplomas with the big balloon arch?" And I think that we thought that was a pragmatic decision. They were concerned about the possibility of, you know, that these, it's just so uncertain what's going to be happening in terms of our ability to have large group event. So Mr. Bevan at the high school did communicate that out yesterday, and he received, I'd say, a great deal of immediate feedback from students, that it's very important to them, that they, they kind of want to hold on to hope that it would be possible to do a traditional in-person graduation in August. I think they really hope that that's possible. And so I'll say, one of the things that I have most come to appreciate and admire about Mr. Bevan is just how student-centered he is, and how important it is to him to consider student voice and to think about their experience. I would say it is a hallmark of his leadership, actually. And so he spoke with me today and let me know that he wanted to take a different course of action. And he has now, I think already, put out to seniors effectively a ballot to vote on what the class of 2020 would like to do for graduation. So I'm fully supportive of this decision of his. He has given them the option of proceeding as scheduled on June 7th with a virtual ceremony of some kind, and then also, you know, something like what I mentioned, perhaps a, a car parade or a drive-through diploma. Or he has offered August 9th as an alternative date for graduation, with the idea that if it is possible, according to the public health guidelines for public gatherings in August, that we would just do graduation like we always do. And the idea would be, I believe he gave a deadline. He said, I think July 26th would be the date when we would take a look at whatever the guidance is and determine whether or not a traditional graduation ceremony is feasible. If it is, we go for it. And if it isn't, then we pivot and we do something virtual. You know, hopefully with something else that's celebratory on August 9th. I think he put that July date in there, because, as you can imagine, it does take some time to put together a graduation event, and there's a lot that goes into it. So he put that out to seniors. He actually recorded a video speaking to them. I haven't watched it yet. And the vote is open until tomorrow at 3:30. He has encouraged students to please speak to their parents before casting their vote. And we're going to see how the vote comes out, and then the decision will be made. So we should know by tomorrow evening what the plan is going forward. So I want to thank Mr. Bevan for his, his flexibility. And I think we all hope that it will be possible to do something in person in August. I have to say quite honestly, I don't know if that will be the case or not. But we will, we'll see.
So when you, when you say "virtual," Emily, okay? You're speaking about something, not just something that's on your computer, your laptop. You're talking about the possibility of having a parade, some, maybe someplace where they can pick up their diplomas, maybe not getting out of their cars, but at least being in the cars together.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that is Westwood, Joseph. We would do it.
Right.
Fun and festive and, yeah. So, yes.
When virtual was mentioned, the perception was that it would be, you know, totally alone, on your laptop. But that's not what you meant.
No, and I, you know, so I think that part of the thinking was that, you know, we would still want to have an opportunity for the student to give the honor address, for example, and to do some of the awards that we do at graduation. And so, so the idea is that some of it would be virtual. And, you know, effectively, people would have like a video of it. So, you know, you would still call every graduate's name, and there might be like a, a slide for each student. But then also, you know, the, the purpose of the, the task force with students and teachers would be to think about what else? So, you know, what can we do in this moment? And, you know, I'm making this up, right? But it could be that seniors all decorate their cars, and the seniors and their families are in a caravan, and residents can stand at the foot of their driveway and, you know, throw them on and wing over to the high school and, you know, pick up your diploma. And, you know, I imagine that Romal would be there with his camera, just like always, you know, like that. So certainly, you know, we would never want it to be sort of sterile and, you know, and all. So, yeah, maybe, maybe the word "virtual," you know, people are picturing it like a Zoom.
This is more than what most people think virtual is.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. And having said that, I fully understand why people, I mean, you know, I said we're experiencing loss. We would all like things to be like always, right? I mean, that would be great. So that's the plan at this point. And I don't know if you have any questions about graduation, but that's.
I think, I think that's a really good solution. I, I commend Mr. Bevan and, and the administration for coming up with it. I like the idea that the students are involved. It's their graduation. I like that they're deciding how they want to graduate in this completely bizarre time of ours.
Yeah.
And I also admire, you know, the flexibility of the administration. I mean, I think to listen to your students and take action says a lot about, you know, how you, how you, how you conduct a, a school. And I just think it's a great, I think it's a nice solution.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Bevan, he was reflecting to me today, and it's interesting to think about how this time is different, that so many decisions that he's made as a principal involve him going on down to the cafeteria at lunch and having, talking to kids and finding out what's on their mind. And, you know, he, he was saying quite honestly that that's like a struggle right now, that it isn't possible to have kind of your finger on the pulse in that way. And, you know, he, I know he had had a, I think he had had a Zoom call with the class officers before making his decision, but it's not the same. And you can't call everybody down to the auditorium and have a class meeting and kind of talk about things. And so it's, you know, it's a challenge. But I think it's come up with a good one.
I think what Sean has done is a wonderful, is very supportive. And I'm hoping it comes through. I'd also like to suggest that, from what I have seen and I've read, and I've seen people say, "We're not going to be much better off this time next year." And one of the suggestions to Sean would be, maybe this committee that's planning this, maybe see if they would continue as a committee, with an ultimate goal is to do something. And it could be a year from now, but the idea to have some kind of an important get-together for that class that's missed out on so much, depending on where things go. And I think what I've read, it's been very touching, is the kids have said, "I never had a chance to say goodbye to my friends. I never had a chance to say goodbye to my teachers." You know, the social part of graduation is which, this, this class has been robbed of. And I think if this committee that's been planning this option, which hopefully could happen in August, could stay together and get creative during the fall, and to maybe have their first class reunion, you know, next June, and have patently a graduation, have the families, they hug everybody. And it could be done, you know, the day before or after the regular graduation. But this, you know, just to keep them together, so that somehow they can be given something like this, you know, when things settle down. Ideally, in August, if that's a possibility. But I think it's unlikely, the way things look right now, that things are going to come to a head that soon. But it should be congratulated, and to see if this committee can keep in touch and continue to plan.
I like that idea.
What other comments, since we can have electronic devices here? I just want to say that, and you'll see, I'm going to enter it in the record later on, public participation. But class president Drew Bass and his classmates are very grateful that Mr. Bevan and the administration listened, and willing to be flexible, and they just want to appreciate, they want to express publicly their appreciation for that.
That's very nice. And let me say, Mr. Bevan specifically noted to me that the feedback he got from students was so respectful and appropriate, the way that they communicated. And I see that as a good sign, that we're graduating a group of people who know how to engage in discourse and, and, you know, work through problems like this. So I appreciate that they, they communicated that. That's great.
Maybe they could teach the adults a few things.
Yeah. Okay, so that's that. So speaking of not having had a chance to say goodbye, I do want to note that we are very aware that students and teachers left on March 12th, assuming they would return. And they left a lot of their stuff in the buildings. And we, we know it. And we are working on a plan to figure out how we're going to clean out lockers and get people's belongings back to them. So stay tuned, we will think about that. And I know that a lot of people have registered their students for our summer enrichment program. And we are waiting for information from the state about rules regarding things like summer camps. That is supposed to be coming out, I understand, by mid-May. And, you know, we'll, we'll wait and hear what guidance exists at that point. And, you know, it could impact our ability to hold summer enrichment. So stay tuned on, on that. A few other ideas about financial impacts. So we obviously are experiencing some financial impacts here, you know, with the closure. There are some savings. So for example, you know, we imagine our utility bills are going to be lower for the, the months that we're, we're not there. But we've also had some additional expenses. We were incurring some additional expenses before the closure, when we had increased cleaning protocols, and we had to buy new equipment and whatnot. And of course, as you know, from our discussion at the last meeting, we've had the loss of some revenue streams that are really important for some of our employee groups. So, you know, I think it's safe to say that the, the, the increased costs or the loss of revenue is greater than the savings that we're seeing. But we're working hard to close the FY '20 budget, and the most urgent issue has to do with food service and extended day employees. And I know we're talking about that in a little bit, so I'll hold on that for a moment. I think that the most significant impacts financially for the closure are, are not going to come in FY '20. They're going to come in FY '21 and probably even FY '22. You know, most concretely, we know that the revenue forecasts for the state are fairly dire. And the state budget process, of course, is significantly delayed at this point. So there are a lot of unknowns. But, you know, we are sure that we're going to have a couple of substantial problems to address in FY '21. It's hard to predict the scope of them now. But, you know, Chapter 70, I am quite certain, will be impacted negatively in FY '21. You know, Westwood doesn't rely on Chapter 70 funding to the extent that many communities do. So we won't feel the impact in the same way as some other places, but I think we need to be clear that we will certainly feel that impact as a community and have to address it. We're very, very concerned about Circuit Breaker. And, you know, the FY '21 operating budget, as, as the school committee voted it, has an offset of, I think, $780,000 from Circuit Breaker. And so this is not a small problem if the Circuit Breaker money doesn't materialize. And so, you know, we are, we're looking at that risk and that liability and thinking about what changes we may need to make in our proposed budget in order effectively to backfill what might be a significant loss of revenue in that, in that area. But again, we don't know how that's going to play out at this point. We're having to kind of speculate about that. We are also anticipating that we will have increased special education costs next year. I imagine that the extended school year program will have to be, you know, bigger, larger than it is now. And we believe that we will have to provide compensatory services next year. And, um, we believe that we will have to provide compensatory services next year for students, or maybe even the following year, for students, um, that are due to the impact to learning, uh, um, right now. And our special ed folks are working really hard to implement services. So, um, in this sense, compensatory in no way would reflect any, um, you know, lack of effort on their part. It would just be like the realities of the situation and what's possible. So those are some big unknowns. And then, um, you know, we are already hearing from folks about potential disruptions for school in the fall, in the winter. I think a lot of people in the medical community and in the scientific community are warning that, you know, there may be other waves of this next year. I know the commissioner of education has already talked about the fact that, um, you know, school in September may not look exactly as we would, would hope. And so, you know, we're, we're aware that there are a lot of possible things that could be impacting us educationally from a budget situation. And it is just so many things that it's hard to know exactly at this point what the scope is. But we're thinking about it. So what are we doing now? We are trying to close out FY 20 as best we can. We're trying to preserve what we can in Circuit Breaker in case we need it in the future. And then we're starting to think about implications for FY 21 and beyond. We are hoping that town meeting can still take place. Clearly, that would really be very important for us to have the budget voted. My understanding is right now it is scheduled for, um, the beginning of June. But obviously, we'll have to see how that situation plays out. We, as a leadership team, are going to be going back to the budget with this new lens that we have and thinking about even if we had to live, say, within sort of the same number that the school committee voted in February, because we know that our needs are going to be different and we're going to have costs in different areas, we may have to cut some things that we were planning to have, if that makes sense, in order to pay for some other things. And that, uh, it's a tough situation to be in. We are aware of the fact, you know, in education in Massachusetts, there's a June 15th statutory deadline around staffing decisions. And so we're going to be taking a look at the budget, developing some ideas, thinking about different contingencies. And we have that deadline in mind. We're going to be working with the leadership team around changes in the timeline of how we spend. So in schools, it's very typical when the new fiscal year starts. We, we tend to do a lot of spending in July and August because we're buying supplies for the upcoming year. So, you know, you start buying materials and your workbooks and et cetera. And we're going to be having a discussion this week with principals to think about, do we need to change the way that we approach that? So we're thinking about that. We're preparing for different contingencies around summer capital projects at this point. If, for example, we didn't have our, um, budget voted by the start of the fiscal year, we could be in a situation where we're on a 1/12 budget. And that might be feasible for a while for the operating budget, but it wouldn't apply to capital. And so we wouldn't have that capital funding available for, um, summer projects that we had been planning on. And so that's, you know, clearly difficult in terms of, um, difficult in terms of timing. Because as you know, we do a lot of, we do a, a lot of, um, facilities in the summer. So we're, we're taking a look at that. You know, we're thinking about what it is and how we're going to, how we're going to.
You, you said during your, uh, earlier part of the report that, um, the federal government was mandating that, that they weren't raising any of the requirements that they mandated for specs, is that right?
Yeah.
So what is, what is that? How does, what are the ramifications of that?
Yeah, yeah. Sure, Abby, you would like to talk about that.
So we will need to wait to see what comes out in writing, right? So today we had verbal comments and a little bit of writing. Uh, but we need to see the real, uh, federal interpretation of what that means. That then goes to the Massachusetts Department of Ed, who interprets it through Massachusetts lens.
Yeah.
And then that gets fed through a Friday webinar from the state special ed director to all the special ed directors of what they mean when they say that. So it is not clear yet. In general, what it means is that the broad understanding of IDEA is not going to be vastly changed. You know, and so we, you know, that's important information for us and we need to know that. And that's something to plan for. So it's a process. It's going to take like three weeks for it to filter to a piece of paper that I could, you know, communicate with you about. But I'm happy to do this and I, like, that's like what I do all day is watch for.
When you have to provide services, for example, during the summer, your kids who have an IED.
Yes.
Okay. So do you have to do that one-on-one? Is the virtual education that they're getting one-on-one or how do you do that?
So we run, um, 16 iterations of summer programming from large group, small group and individual. These are kids who's. And right now we're planning for in-person summer, just like we did last year, the same thing, until we're told that we're not. And then we're contingency planning what to do if that happens, that we can't do it in person. Could we go to someone's home? Could we meet in the community? You know, we're going to get some guidelines on summer camps and that's going to be very, very important.
Yeah.
So question, was this something, um, I know we want to just move along. Something we could start to tee up at the May meeting or is that, at least not all the detail, but I mean, the looking towards, looking, looking towards next year, I guess. I don't want to put too much of work on you, but I just mean, start to tee this up a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I will say that I think internally, we're going to need, we're going to need a little time to take a look at different choices that we might make. And so, you know, we're having like our sort of initial conversation as a leadership team with the principals tomorrow about that. But it, it's going to take some time to work through, um, what we might do.
Okay.
But yeah, I think we can start talking about some.
We can do a calendar if we need to adjust the meeting. Okay, great.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All right. Well, on that cheerful note, that's, um, the end of the superintendent's report.
Okay, good. So why don't we move to public participation? So I'll start with, I'm going to enter in, I'm not going to read, it's in the public record. I'm going to enter in a letter from Drew Bass, Ashley Kutcher and Sarah Roycroft about the graduation. I'm going to enter that into the public record. Um, it did be there. I want to thank the three of them, um, for their letter, very well written, just thank them. Um, and I think I already gave you Drew's comment thanking Sean, Sean and the administration. I'm going to enter that one in the public record. I think I've got six or seven of them comments that I'm going to read. They all, the rest of them, I think the ones relate to international trips. So I'm going to go through these and just kind of read them, um, one by one. The first one is from Diane Lambert, 14 Edward Road. It said, um, "My daughter is going to Spain with the Carousel Tour Group. Our family is concerned about the Westwood High School relationship with the Carousel Tours and if the high school will travel to Spain in 2021 or 2022. The Carousel Group offered families a partial refund of only 30% of the cost of the trip. The alternative choice was a voucher with the full value of the trip that is good for two years and is transferable within a family. So if Westwood High School goes to Spain in April 2021, our rising senior could use the voucher to go and pay for the trip. If Westwood High School doesn't go to Spain until April 22nd, then our younger child could go. I realize you might not know yet if you'll be sponsoring this trip to Spain in the future. However, if Westwood High School decides to sever ties with Carousel Tours and use a different tour company for a future trip to Spain, the voucher from Carousel would be worthless to us and any families who choose the voucher. You anticipate ending your partnership with Carousel and when might we know? Thank you." So I'm going to read, there's like six other comments. The next one is from Joni Morgan, 106 Weatherby Drive. "I'm frustrated with both Carousel Tours who are running the high school Spain trip. They agreed to refund 700 of the 2,300 hours we were charged. A group of parents have emailed the company for a breakdown of how they could charge each child $1,600 fees for cost incurred. This is a ridiculous amount of money and I truly hope if we are not refunded, except for amount that the school committee would consider not using this company again. Also, the Closer Foundation is not refunding the deposit they held for the eighth grade DC trip. This is a company that has worked with Westwood for years and we have given them a lot of money and will not work with the parents is truly unacceptable. How can the school committee help the parents?" The third next comment is from Lori Walton, 176 Strasser Ave. "I'm very concerned with the refund option for the high school paying for Carousel Tours. They are offering no transparency with the $600 fee. They were not able to offer tour, do, or asking the, us for canceling. In addition, most parents are not even aware of the cancel, any reason insurance. Those who were aware, it is advertised to Carousel, the purchase separately. Whether your child would cancel due to uncertainty or anxiety. Most students were excited, that's why you could, parents purchased additional insurance. Without support from the school committee to help the high school individuals get proper refund, I filed a personal complaint with the attorney general's office. Thank you." Let me just, we have a couple more here. Uh, next one, Daniel Mason, 177. Right, just a brief comment, she wanted information about a refund from Carousel Tours on the high school trip to Spain. And then that next comment from Liz and Brendan Law, 45 Hawthorne Street, that states Carousel, they're holding $1,600 for a student cancellation fee for Spain in the trip or alternatively a voucher to be used for a future trip. They're using these vouchers as a way of looking, locking themselves in as a vendor of choice for Westwood future trips. Iberia has offered full refund of rights. The tours are refundable as they could not provide due to government restrictions in Spain. The tour our students booked could not be provided by Carousel. The non-refundable clause in the contract never had envisioned a situation where travel between the US and Spain had been, and the trip would be, had happened. The travel voucher does not work for our students. Also, eighth grader has booked the DC trip. Closer is charging $250 per person in fees that again should be refundable. It looks like both Carousel and Closer are taking advantage of our students in profit from the pandemic. I think that's it. Let me just take one final look before I close. Let me see. Let me just take one for, if there's anything else. There's a few more, um, that just came in. The Stacy Racer comments, "I'm in the business. I've canceled many events during COVID-19 and they've all been refunded." She's Stacy Razors at 110 Thompson. The next one is from Nancy Hernandez, "Two summer Westwoods. Same concerns regarding the Spain trip for my son. Um, if you sever ties with Carousel, we will, too, will be out the $2,300 voucher." All right, with that, John, can you close the, um, comments? I think that could be the next topic on the agenda is the trips.
Want to move on to that topic?
Uh, yes, let me look one final time and then we should close. Thank you for all your participation. Let me just thank everyone for the participation. Yeah, why don't we close it? I don't have to see any other comments. Uh, to the, the next agenda item, I can mention the student travel in 2021.
Yeah. Um, well, let me just get me saying that I share all of, uh, those frustrations with our travel companies at this point. We too are very depressed by the situation. So, um, yes, to put it in context for folks who maybe have not, um, been involved. We had two student trips, one scheduled to go to Spain in April. Well, and then the eighth grade trip DC scheduled. We had to cancel both of those clearly because of the pandemic. And so we have been working hard to advocate for families to get back their non-refundable deposit. We had our attorney review the contracts to see if there was any legal grounds for us to step on. And, um, I'll be honest, there does not appear to be, um, much legal grounds. However, you know, I, I think that nobody ever anticipated this kind of situation, clearly. And so we have advocated, Mr. Bevan, Mr. Redman and I have all made calls and corresponded with the two companies that we have worked with, Carousel Tours in the case of Spain and, um, Close Up in the case of eighth grade. As you might imagine, this is not an issue that's due to Westwood, right? This is every, I mean, every district is dealing with the same situation. And, um, it appears that, I think, one exception, they're all dealing with the same situation, no matter what company they have gone with. So it's a widespread problem. We have reached out to our colleagues in other districts who we know are also traveling with the tour companies and others to see if they've gotten any further than we have. And, um, others have similarly not been having success. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, um, hearing from superintendents about this issue, reached out to the attorney general's office and has asked the AG's office to please support districts in trying to get, um, relief from the tour company. Yesterday, I will mention, I sent a letter.
Charlie, Charlie, can you mute? I think there's some noise in back. Charlie, can you please mute?
So I, I know that, I, I think that Mr. Redman has already communicated to the eighth grade parents. If he hasn't, he's about to, that, um, just an update that yesterday I partnered with, uh, the superintendent in Denham. And we co-wrote a letter to Close Up because we both had contracted for the eighth grade trip, Close Up. And, um, you know, expressed again our disappointment and our hope that they would provide some relief to families. As you can imagine, with both Carousel and Close Up, I have communicated that our ability to ever do business with them again is very dependent on what they choose to do here. So I've been very clear about that. The attorney general's office has, um, shared with us a link and their direction to families is that individual family should, um, use this link to, um, file a complaint with the AG's office and that that starts an investigation. And, um, so I think Mr. Redman has already sent that link out to eighth grade parents. If, if he hasn't yet, I know it's in the works. And I, um, spoke with Mr. Bevan about it yesterday and I think he's planning to do the same with the Spain trip. So I certainly would encourage people to take that course of action and to see what relief we can get. I think the AG's office started one particular company, not a company that we contract with, and they did get some movement. So we'll see. So it's very frustrating. The reason that we put this issue on the agenda tonight is related to something that folks raised during public comment. So Carousel Tours has offered either a voucher for the full amount of the Spain trip or a partial refund. And the amount of money lost, if, if a family takes the partial refund is significant, it's $1,600. The vouchers that they've offered are good until the spring of 2020. And so I just asked to put this issue on the
2022, you said 2020.
Oh, 2022, sorry. Yeah, two springs from now. And it happens that my understanding is a lot of the students who enrolled in the trip are currently sophomores. So, you know, theoretically, there would be opportunities to travel. But I think it's, you know, I wanted to bring this to the school committee's attention because I think in order for families to make an informed decision about whether or not they want to take a partial refund or a voucher, they need to have some sense of whether or not the committee would entertain international travel next spring or the spring after. The school committee's policy for international travel is that trips need to be approved six months in advance. According to that policy, if a group were to be traveling next April, the decision would have to be made by, say, mid-October. So I just thought I would put that issue out there for discussion.
And then the other thing is that we'd have to use the same company, which you're not sure you're going to go.
Well, I mean, obviously, if, if, you know, if the school committee thought that traveling next spring and taking the voucher is a viable option, we could consider that. I was, I was communicating to the company that, um, I don't think it would be a good business decision on their part to not with us if they want us to do business with them again.
Right.
What, do we know if
What, do we know if families have already made this decision or are they still making it or, or where are they in the process?
I think they're still making it. My understanding is that the, you know, the company said that the deadline to request the partial refund is June tenth.
Emily, would the company consider letting the people uh who have the uh this voucher sell it to another Westwood family and get their money back? That way, if we did a trip in two years.
I, I think that, yes, my, my understanding, and I will double check this, but my, I heard someone during public comment say that it was uh transferable to a family member. I, I think that they have said it is transferable, that you could sell it.
But outside the family, to another person, not in your family that wants to go on the trip. Because, I mean, it's just so many families have another kid in the family. What, what if they allowed, if we were to do it in two years, that they could sell it to the, the new, the new kid who's not in the family?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I, I just want to clarify, it's not, you know, it's not like my JetBlue voucher, right? Where I can then choose to go where I want to go whenever, that it, it, it's, it would be a voucher for, you know, to, to replicate this trip as a Westwood High School trip. And this, this trip happens to be a um, a home exchange. So where our students go to Spain and they stay with Spanish families.
Here's the other issue though with the um, with the voucher. And the way, uh, I mean, the impact that all of this has had on the economy and so forth. We don't know what businesses are going to be around, right? So I think that people should think long and hard before they um decide on a voucher for a company, um, a small company and that they're going to use in, you know, two years. So.
And the other thing is, is the school committee, any school committee, willing to make a decision on something, a trip that's going to take place in two years? How do you think that's going to fit in with what the curriculum is for that particular time year? I mean, I think that's, I think that's asking something that you almost need a crystal ball to foresee. It's worth.
Agree with Carol. I think one of the questions for them too is could the voucher be put into an account outside of the control of Carousel that would be there and the third party could access that money? I, they're probably all going to go bankrupt anyway, but you know, to say to them, if you want to honor this voucher, put the money in a, a third party place. So if a Westwood kid wants to use it in two years. Uh, I think the idea of this trip to go stay with a family of a kid that stayed with our families is a wonderful idea if it's possible. It may not be possible and we may not be out of the woods at that time. But we're just trying to help people get their money back in some form or another. That may be an option.
I think it's going to be up to the attorney general to help people get their money back.
So it sounds, so if I summarize, it sounds like a few things. One is we're going to have a communication from uh Mr. Bevan that will go out about, you know, I think the turn, you know, starting the claim to turn, which I understand, because I mean, it is, I mean, the, the math doesn't work, makes sense any for anyone's math doesn't make sense, especially with the cancellation. So I think the second question, what I think is, I think it would be challenging is my sense and let me see what the committee thinks. Committee, six months, so that's October, I think, if I do the math, or November, I don't know exactly, to, to make a decision even then about a trip in the spring and April. Is that fair? That we probably even, I mean, given the world?
I think that's fair.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I think that, you know, it's unlikely, I mean, probably almost very unlikely we would could be in that position. My sense is for at least for two thousand twenty one, I mean, two thousand twenty two is another matter, but that's, um, I guess that's my sense. Is that kind of the consensus it sounds like?
Yeah.
It's a stretch.
Yeah. I would say that I would absolutely encourage the families to contact the attorney general. I, I, I do. I know of other districts that have had similar, you know, eighth grade trips where the initial um, it was a thirty percent refund and um, the company wasn't moving. And I think the attorney general maybe, maybe did get involved or was contacted or somehow and, and they, they ended up flipping so that the seventy percent was the refund and the thirty percent was the. So I, I, I think you can't discount that. I think, you know, for the eighth grade trip and for this trip, you should contact the attorney general.
Does that give you the guidance you need, Emily, or that you can catch?
Well, I mean, yeah, so I, I absolutely agree. I think people need to contact attorney general. I think that's the best course of action if the goal, the goal is to get the money back. You know, I, I think for people considering vouchers, I mean, yeah, that would be my sense too, that I think it's, it seems like a very risky proposition for the school to approve foreign travel next spring. I mean, I think we would just be in this situation again potentially. Um, and I, I just felt like it would be important for families to have that information to factor into their decision-making. That it, it doesn't feel like a good bet to me to take the voucher for next spring. And it's a lot harder to predict in twenty twenty two. And I, I mean, Carol, I think that your point is a valid one and I think Charlie said it as well. Like, I don't know if that company will be in business in two years. I think things are very uncertain right now. Um, so you know, I just want to make sure people have the information that they need to make the best decision.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, I guess my other thing, this is not about this, it's a longer term look at just the vendor. I mean, I think this, not these, just these vendors, this is, this whole thing isn't covering the world of our vendors, the broader. I'm sure Lemon deals with everything, but it's just a broader consideration, you know, going forward, not, not just these guys, but all our vendors, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions on that or comments? Okay. So why don't we, um, and I just want to actually thank, um, I know, um, Ms. Flanagan's been dealing with a lot of this and I mean, it's not, this is not obviously the, what I think anyone would want to be dealing with. I want to just thank her though. She's been, I think, dealing with kind of a lot of the people's concerns and trying to do as much she can. So I just want to thank her publicly as well.
Yes.
Um, good. So why don't we go to, now go back to our topic of transportation contracts?
Um, I can step in here. So um, as we know from some of these other conversations, we're in a very unprecedented times. And we've had to consider how to act on our transportation contracts. These are our regular buses, um, yellow buses that run for schools every day as well as the um special education transportation for out of district and district students. We've had to determine um, proceed in paying these vendors during the period of the school closure. So when our buildings are closed. We have had guidance to this effect from both the federal government and the state government. The federal government has um, in the CARES Act specifically said that um districts that would want to be eligible for relief through the CARES Act, if there is potential funding through that source for a town like Westwood would need to be paying and to the extent practicable, practicable, with the specific language, making payments to vendors such. So that's one context federally. We've also had that message seconded at the state level. Um, where they also have said that they, the, the guidance from the state has been for us to pay for critical services, including transportation. So that said, we've been evaluating how to proceed with both of these con- contracts. And we have two contracts, one with Conley Bus and another with Vampool. Um, with Conley Bus, we worked with a group of other districts that, so that were um all using Conley Bus as well as a transportation vendor. And the group led by Needham and Dedham. And that group spoke to Conley um and discussed the realities and what their costs are um for maintaining oper- operation and being ready to resume service. Um, at the time when the discussions began, we thought school might resume in May or June. And so we were preparing for that scenario and Conley was, was as well. So the conversation was how much does it cost you just to stay in business and be ready for us to run our buses again when school resumes on site? And Conley responded and made a proposal after some negotiation with those, with um Needham and Dedham representatives. Proposal for um towns that use their buses for a reduced rate. They took the daily rate. So what is our, at the town level, each town has its own contract um for buses. Whatever was the town's particular daily rate and then they deducted the cost of labor and the cost of gas that they weren't actually incurring during that period of time because Conley made a decision to um furlough or lay off employees. So um, they took that math and they were very transparent in their analysis. And they came back to the districts with a, a number for Westwood. Um, our number would be fifty eight percent of the cost, the, the full daily rate, cost of each bus. Um, and that would apply to the seventeen buses that run in Westwood and it would be sixty one percent of the cost of the bus for the medical bus. And that was their proposal. In reviewing that, we do think that it is, um, especially I've been on multiple calls with other school business officials um that have been discussing this, this, um, all of the different um transportation vendors and this dilemma that we've got for determining how much we pay. We do think that this is a very fair and reasonable offer from Conley. And I, I was saying that having heard where other districts have landed with their own um negotiations with transportation vendors. So that's where, that's where that is. We have not yet responded, but we will be working with legal counsel to see whether we need an amendment to our contract or whether we can proceed um with, with paying it as is. So I'll follow up on those next steps. But our, our plan is to pay this amount as proposed. And the, the intent of this um group of districts that had worked with Conley to establish a common plan um for all of us was for all districts eventually to go back to their school committees, discuss this at the school committee level, but hopefully um come to the same agreement that this is a reasonable offer that we can all accept mutually. That's the perspective there. I don't know if you have any questions specific on Conley and I can proceed to Vampool, which is a little bit more.
Um, I have a question. So were there any discussions about what happens when, let's say in the fall, when school resumes? And if, you know, if, 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 for example, we go back on a half capacity, you know, or, or we're not, we're not, we're not ramped up on day one as we were before this crisis. Is it, is there a whole nother renegotiation about the rate? Is it going to be prorated? Were there any discussions about, you know, what are the costs to, is it going to be a phased in cost? Or, or is that going to be another discussion?
It's honestly going to be another discussion, which I don't think is a bad position for us to be in because we don't know enough about what's going to happen um for the next school year. Um, so this is only a proposal to address the, the bills between, for the period of the closure for this school year. Um, and.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Uh, the others are my next comment for our next, for the next.
I address um the other contract, Vampool is a, is not quite in the same place in that there's more follow-up that needs to be done with them. I haven't had as many um conversations with Vampool as I have had with Conley Bus, but I have provided use with like preliminary proposals that they've um presented. There is a group of districts also that has been um, that has kind of banded together and spoken to Vampool as a, as a group. Um, and they've pushed for as lower rate as they could secure. Um, Vampool is in a different position than Conley is in that, number one, they did not furlough or lay off their drivers. Um, so they've retained their staff and that was a position that they took based on economic considerations, they're a larger company, but also based on the reality that they um, even in this situation, they, we might be calling them back and they might need to resume service for districts in the summer time. So we're aware of those dynamics with Vampool and we continue to see where it will land. As I heard is that um their best proposal to the group of districts that was led by BIKO was uh seventy eight percent of the original daily rate. So that was where I think we still have to do some more work there, but um, I'm expecting like the same kind of um thought process in terms of vetting the proposals.
And do we, do we know if they're as forthcoming with their information and their disclosures as Conley was?
They haven't been as detailed in their financial, in the financials that they presented to us. So that certainly is one area for us to push and we can certainly ask them for more support um and more analysis on how they've come to the proposals that they are making. Um, so that's something that we're still waiting for.
So I guess um, this is just more of a comment going forward, but actually it's a question, I'm not, how do we manage, how do these contracts work from? How do we, how do we manage our accounts payable? It's more of a philosophy and what are most of these vendors, how do they bill us typically?
They typically bill us monthly for, for these two transportation vendors. Um, our account, I mean, in terms of accounts payable, we, like the operating principle is that we pay when the service is rendered. So we, we don't prepay for services, um, for, it's certainly not for transportation anyway. So we're building a great and these bills up.
I guess I just encourage us going forward to be, um, I mean, well, let's just manage, I would just encourage us to use our accounts payables to our advantage. I mean, uh, especially to get into next year. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I had a conversation, Tony, about our situation with Vampool and I think we're um, I think doing that right now. So I hear you.
Just, yeah, I mean, I mean, I hate to get down the back on the student trip, but obviously, you know, once money's given to someone like Carousel, it's hard to pay back. It's different if they, you know, you have a payment. Okay, yeah.
Reading philosophy, especially during this closure, has been for us not to be the first movers. We wanted to see what, what, what the, how this was settling and what the landscape looked like and any guidance we were getting from the federal, state level and calls from other towns, because we, we have had, we have difficult decisions to make in terms of um which bills to pay. Certainly in transportation, but also in other areas like tuition and we're moving cautiously there as well.
No, no, thank, no, that's the right approach. And I think, I mean, the Conley, it's a big number, right? Two hundred thousand about?
Yeah, that, that, the savings um, this period of the closure. So it's quite significant and it's important not to overpay for something.
Anything else on the bus, transportation, I should say?
Nothing for me.
Okay, why don't we move on then to our, um, actually, one thing I do want to say before, since there are still people on. So I did get a text saying, why don't we have live participation? And that really deals with Zoom, I think you, I don't think it's possible actually on this venue, at least on Teams. We, Zoom has had some, uh, even in town, it's had some security issues with one of their other boards. So I just want to make clear, if, I'd love to have people publicly speaking, uh, but I think it's a bit our decision for security reasons to do that. So I just wanted to say that for the public. Um, good. So why don't we go to a status of employees funded through revolving accounts?
Okay, so I can update you on that as well. Um, at our last meeting, we presented some numbers and we shared the fact that we have lost revenue in some critical spending day and, and food service and that this impacts our ability to, to pay specifically that we're running deficits as long as we continue to pay our employees there. Um, and the school committee evaluated whether it made sense for a furlough at the time the decision was not yet, but we were going to review this again. In the interim, I followed up with legal counsel, number one, to better understand um the landscape on unemployment, especially because the laws have changed um under the, this new quote, under, you know, state of emergency and this situation of pandemic. Um, so I have learned some things there that have informed that um thought process. I've also met with, along with Emily, we met with Pam Duke Man, the town finance director, and we spoke further about the considerations that we were evaluating in relationship to this furlough decision and sought her opinion and guidance on what she thought um revenue sources and solution, uh, solutions could be for closing the fiscal year for FY twenty if we were in a bind. Um, so we discussed that as well. And we had a budget steering meeting where we also gathered the players um just to evaluate this, this topic and any ripple effect it would have on the FY twenty one budget. Um, so all of those steps were taken. Um, I do believe, so one thing I learned is that there is more federal support to work, to um offset some of the unemployment costs. So we are self-insured from an unemployment perspective. Um, we typically would pay the full cost. There is more federal support there. So that means that we may not have to pay the full cost. We might be able to pay less than that. So that was, you know, potentially news that would say maybe there is a rationale to consider fertile seriously here. Um, but there were offsetting considerations that were very significant um that came out, both in conversations with our legal counsel and also with, with the town officials. Um, and the key thing there is that we're in a tricky place because the, the employees that we would um consider furloughing here typically don't work for us in the summer. And we would have to um execute this furlough in a way to make it, you know, very clear that they're not eligible for unemployment in the summer. We don't believe they would be um if we did it properly. But there is so much uncertainty in the way that the um, the, this is implemented, the unemployment programming is implemented and what employees might do, um, that we feel there's a significant. that we feel there's a significant risk that the town would incur, that there is a chance that some people may collect unemployment during summer months. That far offsets any savings that we might recoup in furloughing people for a period of four weeks or five weeks. We really don't have a lot of room anyway left for us to furlough in the, between now and the end of the school year. And so that, that swayed us in the other direction. And, you know, if you understand that now, because unemployment rules say that we can, people can collect unemployment for up to twenty-six weeks and maybe even longer once they are eligible, a furlough of four or five weeks is far offset by a risk that someone might be collecting unemployment for a period of twenty-six. And the, there is an administrative cost to disputing any improper claims there. And we're not sure what that process, what the process would be at the state level to dispute them and whether we can even execute on it. So with, with all of this assessed, I would say the recommendation is still to re, continue paying in both, for both groups, extended day and and food service that were originally discussed. Open to comments and questions from the school committee on this.
Can I just add one thing? I mean, it was really important to us to, to have that budget steering meeting to speak with the town because this decision, you know, it's, it's not just about our budget, it's also about town budget. And that's because, you know, our decision with our employees ultimately impacts the town financially in terms of the unemployment that then gets paid. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had a clear conversation with them and that we weren't just sort of, you know, tossing our issue over to them and get their input about what their preference was. So, you know, we had that conversation and I, I think we all have clarity that we think this is the right.
Yeah. And I think the other thing on that, so I'd like to thank Pam and obviously her team and Chris and all them. But the other thing that became clear in that conversation was just, I hadn't really thought about was the, you know, we're, whatever, seven, eight weeks, to your point, Lama. And like the unemployment theory, what is it, thirty-nine? You could go on even past the summer, depending on what happened. So, you know, the tail on that is, you know, very, very long. So that, you know, could have kind of a long tail of costs. So I think that made it kind of much to me, much, and now achieved. But I think the other, you know, piece that we had a good conversation was, I think, again, years fiscal. I think between the reserve account in particular, we will be able, you know, I think, I think Pam put it pretty comfortable, it will be able to bridge some, if there are additional costs here. So that was, I think, good news as well.
Yeah, that was. We really appreciate, appreciated that conversation. So, I mean, that's, that is our recommendation. We said that we would, you know, we had made a decision through May fifteenth. We said we were going to wait to hear what the governor said about the closure. Now we know. And we're recommending that we continue to keep people on for those remaining however many weeks it is.
No, I think it sounds good. I agree.
I agree.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to keep these people on at this stage?
I don't think it requires a motion. We're just continuing.
They're already on.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're just not. You know, I, it came up last time and I, I suggested we put it on as an action item, just because I think it would sort of affirm the decision, but I, I don't think it's required. So I would leave that up to you.
All right, we can do it later. We can do it in the action items. Yeah. Okay, great. So why don't we move on to always my favorite topic, the school calendar?
You're still on the ball this year with the school calendar too. So I, you know, I don't think it involves a big discussion tonight, but I just wanted to put on your radar screen that the governor has announced that September fourteenth will be a state holiday because right now the Boston Marathon has been moved to September fourteenth. So I, I don't know if that's Patriots Day, but he's also indicated that there, there will still be the regular Patriots Day, obviously in, in April. And so I, I think we may need to make an adjustment to our calendar to reflect that. But I think maybe we should just hold on before making any decisions about the calendar, because who knows what else will emerge in the next whole of months. And you know, we may want to take a look again at what our end date is for next year and think about if we want to change the start date at all as well. So just some things to think about there.
Yeah. And how much does that, I mean, we don't even talk about now, but I was just thinking, yeah, to that question, I mean, leave aside the state holiday. Like, and it would be interesting if you have that conversation at some meeting, you know, about are there other alternatives, are there? And obviously some of this would have to deal with the, the, you know, the West, the Westwood teachers. And obviously there's, what do you call it, the personal development days that we have a traditional cadence, you know, some of that, yeah, I know you're thinking about that. You may, it may be from an education point, I'm sure there's things that you may want to change, but we don't need to talk about it, but at some point you could.
Yeah. So I just wanted to alert you.
All right. Anything else on the calendar, Mia? You always like the calendar.
I do like the calendar. I just, you know, parents make a note, September fourteenth.
Yeah, that one might, that one might not get much attention these days. Okay. So why don't we move on to our school committee chair up the ozone updates. Mia, if you want to just comment on Thursday session?
Sure. So this Thursday, we are having a community forum to, that's focusing on redistricting and consolidation because five of the seven shortlisted options do involve consolidation of either Hanlon and Deerfield or Hanlon and Sheen. I, you know, I, we've gotten a couple of questions about, you know, given the, the current environment, is this the right time to be having a community forum? I just want to say that we are moving this project forward on the MSBA timeline and on our timeline. It's important for us to keep this going because we want to stay within the MSBA parameters. This is, you know, the, the goal is to receive funding from the MSBA and we don't want to do anything to jeopardize that. So we are absolutely moving this project forward on that timeline. And we're trying to make the access to the forum as convenient and flexible for people as possible. It's going to be held via Zoom webinar, which it'll be moderated by the Westwood Media Center. There actually will be an opportunity for live public participation. You can get called on by the moderator and, and sort of publicly speak at the end of the program. So, and then you'll also have an opportunity, if you want to dial into the call, you can, you won't be able to see the, the materials, but you'll, you know, you don't need the internet connection. You can still dial in and also participate that way and, and speak publicly. Or you can just watch it livestreamed and, and also watch it at a later date. I think Western Media will be replaying it. So we're trying to give people as much flexibility to stay engaged in this process. This is a critical element of the project. Consolidation is, is a big issue and it's one that the school committee has already begun talking, as you know, as we know, talking about, and we've had presentations about it. And it's really important for us to hear the feedback from the community and for the community to understand what it entails, the good and the bad. So I encourage everybody at seven o'clock to, to log in or dial in and, and hear, you know, the presentation about consolidation and participate to the extent you're able to. So that's what's next for the building project.
And can people submit questions, kind of like they do now as well, or is that?
Yeah. I mean, people can always, anytime, twenty-four hours a day, submit questions to us via the website. There was, that's, there's always that option. And we typically respond to those within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, depending on, you know, when we get it. If they want the question to be answered at the forum, then make a note of that and we will raise that as a, as a forum question. Otherwise, you know, we would just respond to it in the normal course of, of business. But if there's a specific question you have about the forum and you want to submit it ahead of time, just make a note that it's for the forum and we'll address it then. But again, just go to the School Building Project website, click on the submit a question link, and that's how, that's the easiest way to do it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that? Any other updates anyone else has? I've just got one or two, but like I said, the PTOs aren't meeting, I think, much these days. Talked about the budget steering. The other thing, I think you've heard, I, we've met with Chris as well on the budget steering. According to Chris, the town election, I think, according to Chris, I think town meeting is probably more up in the air, my interpretation, than the town election. I think they are trying to move forward, encouraging, just encouraging, just encouraging our residents to potentially do early ballot or absentee. But they are trying to move forward June second. I think that is still trying to work out. There will be live polling locations, although it may be modified, what Chris shared with us. So, but I did, this more from a public, you know, point of view, like, you know, what more people that obviously early go or do absentee ballots, less people that will be in the poll booth, which I think is good for everybody. So I wanted to put that plug in. Okay. Anything else on this section, any question? Okay. All right. So I think we're going on to action item. Yeah. So I think the first action items per our conversation earlier, we have here, so we might as well vote on it, is vote on the status of employees funded through revolving accounts. So I think the motion would be to continue paying as is those employees that are funded through revolving accounts. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Second, great. So let me do roll call. Jessica Jowdy.
I think she accidentally left the meeting, so she'll be rejoining any second.
All right. Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Donahue.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Jessica Jowdy. Do you know the motion? This is on the revolving account.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen, yes. All right, great. It's unanimous. The next is, next time is approval of the minutes of the April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? Okay. Why don't I do a roll call on that motion on the minutes? Jessica Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Donahue. Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
And Anthony Mullen is a yes, so that's unanimous. And then I think we have three policies, I think, to finally approve. Not finally, but I feel like we've been had these on each, for a long time. So I guess, I guess we just take one by one, right? Is there anything you need, anything Emily or anything wants to say about these before we vote?
Nope.
Any questions? Okay. All right, great. The first one is the approval of the homeless students enrollment rights and services.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Let me do a roll call. Jessica Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Donahue.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen is a yes, so unanimous. The next one is the approval of the, the educational opportunities for military children policy. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Nope. All right. So can I have a roll call? So Jessica Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Donahue.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen is a yes. Finally is the vote to approve the educational opportunities for children and foster care policy. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right. Let me do the roll call. Jessica Jowdy. Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Donahue.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen. Yeah, so I always forget myself. All right. And I think that's it. We're two minutes over, but sorry, but so finally, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Let me do a roll call. Jessica Jowdy. Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Donahue. Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen, yes. All right. Could be unanimous. All right. Have a good Tuesday. We'll see each other on Thursday.
It's Thursday.